Warren here. Essay here. Simon here. Knoxinger.
Here.
McNabb.
Here.
Muttloo.
Here.
All right.
All allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and equal rights for all.
Visiting correspondence. First we have Dan Zaire.
Well, hello, everybody.
Hello. Readings.
Readings. Dr. Freeman asked me to come and talk to you for a few minutes about a book that I co-wrote during, actually, right before the pandemic kind of kicked into full gear. I was contacted in early January by Disney and Lucasfilm to co-author a book of a series of curated essays about the mythology of Star Wars and how it works and how it ties into previous mythologies throughout culture. And so I brought what we call in the trade as a visual aid. And it was a really amazing experience. It was, I had, I think, six weeks to write 30,000 words. And of course, the rest of my life didn't slow down, so nights and weekends. Fortunately, I have an amazing wife, who you all know, Mrs. Zaire, who helped to kind of juggle things while I went to a coffee shop or head into my office in my basement and just hammer away. But it was an amazing experience. I learned a heck of a lot about the world of publishing and writing. And since I take dual credit here anyway, it's been a good extra piece of ethos to help convince students the power of working hard, believing in yourself, never giving up on your dreams. And then when you do that, good things can happen for you because you set yourself in a position to be successful. And it's an Amazon bestseller, so not too sure.
Yay.
So, do you have any questions for me?
No, I think that's amazing, though. I mean, that's a real, like, just a great inspiration for our kids and pretty impressive, I would say.
Thank you.
I may have to read it to see what's going on in Star Wars.
I believe the library has an autographed copy.
What so intrigued me about the whole thing was that catching the intrigue of the students, making those connections for learning that enhances the level of learning by tying into their interest, whatever it may be. And I think we always have to look for that. It's just not pouring something out to them and assimilating it, but that spirit, that joy of learning through something exciting that they can really connect with.
Amen to that, Gloria. It's just all about not apologizing for who you are and following your strengths and your passions because you never know where it's going to benefit you. And being good with grammar helps a lot, too.
Immensely. They forget that sometimes, that there is application for what they learn.
That's right.
Absolutely.
So, how old were you when you first saw your Star Wars movie?
I was five.
And you fell in love right then?
Right on the spot. I saw it at a drive-in theater in New Orleans, Louisiana.
Fantastic.
So, you made the advocate here, and with Harrison Ford, can you tell us a little bit how that happened?
Yes. Well, because of the success of my podcast, I travel when I can. And so I went to the premiere last December for The Rise of Skywalker in Hollywood and took Mrs. Zaire. And I got invited to the VIP area, so I got to meet a lot of the cast. And Harrison was just right where you were, and he was just eating something. And so I went over and tapped him on the shoulder, and we just started talking. I talked to him about education and how Indiana Jones is a great inspirational mythological character. And then we talked about writing and the world of how students react to things and press and all kinds of stuff. And then at the end of the conversation, he said, I said, "I'd love to get a picture of you." And he said, "You know what? I don't like to do this kind of thing, but because you're a teacher, I'm going to do it. Thank you for what you do for these kids." So, thank goodness for that. And it was pretty great. And then it was a good five minutes, and then afterwards, I just kind of took a breath and thought, "I can't believe that happened." It was pretty amazing.
So, I just can't help it, but who is it? Joseph Campbell. So, does your book, do you take anything from Campbell at all, who wrote, you know, the whole?
Absolutely. The hero's journey, yeah. There's a lot of Campbell in this about the evolution of the hero and the different trials and the things that they face in order to become who they want to be and to kind of step out of their comfort zone into an unknown world. So, I brought a lot from Joseph Campbell in that sense.
Yeah. I'm hoping that you're going to make it to the Star Wars rent. Isn't that where, you know?
Yes.
This whole place?
I've been there.
Have you really?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That's incredible.
I've been there. I've been there a few times, yes.
Wow.
Yeah, pretty cool. They've invited me. So, they do some educational things, too, so pretty exciting.
Yeah. Yeah, amazing. Well, it's really neat to be in your presence.
Oh, gosh. Hey, likewise. We're just following our dreams and doing what we can, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I'd definitely like to thank Mr. Zaire. He's been very patient. He was originally scheduled to be here in November. However, we went into deeper mitigations and couldn't bring any extra people in for a little while. So, November, December, but he made it this month.
I made it, yep.
How did you do it?
Called me out of the bullpen. I was ready to go.
Might be a tough act to follow the next time we bring him to you. All right. Anything else?
We're going to have high expectations now for the rest of the staff.
That's right. That's right.
I like it. I like it. Hear that, Russell?
All right. Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, family.
Yes. Okay. Next, we have the recipients of the letter of commendation from the National merit scholarship.
So, we have four this year, and I'll have Dr. Sanders kind of scroll through them as we go. I'm not going to get much further than to stay six feet from everybody in the corner. Our first letter of commendation went to Shelby Borbitt. I will tell you that each of these kids is very talented. They are talented individuals. They have great academic interests and great work ethic, so we're very proud of them. This letter of commendation, I can't remember exactly how many people get the letter of commendation. It's a pretty small number out of thousands nationally, so this is a large deal. So, we're very proud of each of these students. Our next student is, well?
Applause.
William Knight. I knew it was William. I just wanted to make sure I said it right when I said it. William also has a great work ethic, and he is another very proud Panther, and we're proud of him as well. Our fourth, Mrs. Ivy Lersh. I think somebody here knows her pretty well. Ivy's done an outstanding job in our school. Awesome. Hardworking students. And as I mentioned, this is not an easy selection process. And then our final student is Joseph McCoy. All four of these students are outstanding in the classroom, but they're outstanding beyond. They're good people beyond that. And that's really one of the things that we pride ourselves in here at Washington is our citizenship and our students being not only strong academically, but good people to be with. And I give a vouch for each of these individuals. They're good kids. So, we're proud of them and proud of their accomplishment. We would have loved to have brought them in. At the time we scheduled the meeting, we were still under a 10-person limit. So, we put this together, but hey, it'll be a nice memorial for their families. A better word, probably not a memorial. So, there you go. Thank you.
So, do we have any other visitors or correspondents in the audience? Okay. If not, we're on to reports. The dean's report.
You can see copies of each of those reports. You have the care first semester and the care program for December, OSS for December, OSS for first semester, and Saturday attentions for first semester.
All right. Enrollment reports.
As you can see, we have about 1,411 students. So, we're down a little bit, but we always expect that in January because we do have early graduation. Not as many in the past as we have had in the past, though, because I think we started around 1,434 students. So, you know, 23 students. We're doing well if you're staying connected, and that's important.
I think it's new that you added the AMPM Remote Life Skills and Audit District, and I like that. Nice to see. Thank you.
Yeah, especially this year with a little different format, where you can see how the split turned out.
Yeah, it was pretty interesting.
The audit districts are moved to a certain?
Yeah.
Yes. A lot of times it's.
All right. Anything else on that? The financial report, Dr. Sanders.
Okay, so I've got all the reports loaded there, the revenue report. I'm not going to bring it up because it's just too small to see up there on the big screen, but I am going to say, you know, we've received pretty much 98% of our, you know, local revenue, you know, through the levy process. There's two outliers on this. Interest is falling well short of, you know, what we've budgeted in the past as far as interest goes. I was just trying to be optimistic and kind of will it, you know, to kind of go back up, but it's not. But there's good news regarding that later on in the agenda and in the cafeteria just because we're not collecting money for meals. And so that's going to be a lag that ties with state reimbursement. So, that's what I wanted to share with you on the revenue. On the expense side, I'm just going to hit a couple of the highlights. We're tracking, you know, we're halfway through the year. It's hard to believe, halfway. So, in the education fund, we're at 46% expended. So, anytime you're underneath that amount, that's good on the expense side. Operation and maintenance, we're at 39% of the total budget of dollars spent. So, that's really good. And then the transportation fund, we're right at about 50%. Now, keep in mind, in transportation, we front-load a lot of the expenses so that we've caught back up. So, those funds are tracking the way they should. Now, on the insurance and the investment report, my mouse is being a little non-responsive. On the investment side of the House, I do want to point out, I had emailed the board about rolling the ISDLAF into the MACs. There's this account right up here, 1.53 million. It was drawing next to nothing, so PMA reached out to us and said, "Hey, if we roll it just down into here, we're going to get a healthier return." Not that there's much of a return on your interest, but it will produce better than what it has been. That will take, that took effect the day after I corresponded with the board about that. So, in the next report, we won't see this amount right there. It'll all be lumped into right here. And that's the, that's it on the investment report. The insurance report, we have closed out the year, okay? In my nine years, I have not seen a year like this. So, when we look at our total spend of 1.68 million, that is far below any of our other previous years as our expenses. And when you compare it to last year, which last year was a heavy year in expense, you know, we're four, I figured, calculated, we're 42% down from last year. That's great. That's great news. When you look at the overall expense, I've never seen where we've only had one month where we spent more. So, some of the decisions that the insurance committee made, you know, this last December as they moved forward with, moving on with the premium holiday, we executed that in December. What a great deal because, you know, the district saves $200,000 a month that doesn't get swept out of the education fund for the insurance premium. So, that was truly a win-win, and we're still, you know, managing about a $1.3 million health trust fund balance. So, not that I want to see COVID continue. I don't. But this has really been good on the bottom line for the insurance, so. The only other thing, it's not up there, but I do want to just talk briefly about the two action items that are going to take place later in the agenda. The finance committee had given First Midstate the green light to pursue a bond refunding. They called today. The bonds were due at 10, or the bids were due at 10:00 AM this morning, and they had four bidders. And three of them were incredibly local. I think Heartland, Morton Community Bank, and the bank institution that was the best bid is the People's Bank of, the People's National Bank of Kiwanu. We'll call them local. I mean, they're not too far away from us, but they provided a restructuring, a refunding package that the finance committee had given direction. If we could save $3,350,000 or more, we'd execute it. $537,000.
Holy cow.
Okay. So, it's great to report that the restructuring is going to save taxpayers a half million dollars, okay? It was a private placement since we're going with a local bank as compared to going with the big bond, you know, the federal bonds. And so, they're in the process of, they locked in a final rate of 2.38%. And so, I have some additional notes that we'll get to, but I wanted to kind of give this board, the board, the information about this because there will be two resolutions that need to be approved tonight. They're long resolutions. There's no other documents attached, but we have to approve those tonight to capture the benefit of this refunding. So, it really worked in our favor. Mr. Pistorius with First Midstate indicated that we'll probably see some additional savings. You know, the board had asked about costs. When you do a private placement, it's about $30,000 less in cost to the district because we are just going direct. There's no bond counsel, there's no rating charge, and then there's no bond insurance that we have to pay because it is a private placement. So, First Midstate does a lot of work with this, with this institution. Mr. Pistorius says that they do work every year with them. They typically do a bond issue. And so, it's nice to report out on that. We'll take advantage, not so much with the investment report, the interest rates, but when you're doing some restructuring, it's really a good deal. So, that's all I have for the finance. Financial report. Do you have any questions?
So, I just want to confirm, right, that with that bond restructuring, that's not something that's going to impact our budget? It doesn't save us any money. It's going to actually be money that the taxpayers have to pay less when they get their bill.
That's correct. In that, as mentioned, Steve, the great levy presentations that I put together every year, the bond and interest levy isn't, we don't control that. That is just the dollars that are levied each year by the county. This will knock off one year off the repayment schedule, so it drops it to 2037. That's when the final year will be paid. Originally, it was in 2038. So, it's paying it down, saving the taxpayers, you know, $537,000 over the life of that issue. And it is nothing, like you said, Brian, it's nothing, it doesn't impact our budget at all.
Well, nice job, and thanks for bringing that forward, guys.
That's kind of a nice surprise, then.
Yes, it is.
I was, I was kind of wondering when he called that we'd see like $360,000 or something close. And when he said that, it was like, oh, boy, that's really nice. I think they were surprised as well.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. On to board committee reports. Facilities, which, do you anyone want to talk about that? Most of it we're going to cover in a little bit, right?
I can do that. I even put notes down.
All right.
I did quite a bit. Yes, we've talked with Brian Holmes from MEP, and there will be an information item on that later about the four phases that he has planned. He has a very well-thought-out plan, and the work will be done in sections just in the summertime. And for those in the audience, this would be changing from steam to water.
Hot water.
And it will also encompass life safety and lifespan of some old equipment. We also talked about the stadium footprint planning, and Dr. Freeman has, shall we say, negotiated with Kias at Farnsworth to possibly have a full under $10,000 for future planning of the stadium footprint. There are going to be, let me see, additional parking lights, which will be wonderful because I do remember falling over my feet in the dark, you know, in, after football games. And there are, I believe, six new lights or nine new lights.
Six new poles, nine new lights.
Six poles and nine new lights. And possibly, Dr. Sanders can work out a contract with Amarin so that they can change the lights so we don't have to do it in-house. And last of all, the Torrey gyms, which I got to tour with Dr. Sanders. They will be replaced, but the overall cost for that is covered through the capital project. And the school bell. It had one more part that needed to be installed. There is a great possibility that it will be ready to be installed in early February. However, it might be best to just wait until spring break so that the hallways or the employers cleared and no students would be involved. And that's it.
All right. I think that covered it. There was a lot there.
It was one of our longer.
It was.
All right. Anybody have questions on that? Let's put, we're going to talk more about the HDAC. Okay, not on to discussion and informational items. Number one, resignation of Maggie Bagley, social worker.
Maggie is one of our township employees, and as you'll see later in the agenda, there are a couple of changes coming in the township, so this is tied to that. It's, the good news is Maggie is leaving because she has another position, so we're excited.
Also, the resignation of Dan Zaire from Class Executive Board Sponsor.
Yep. Dan's been the junior class, one of the junior class sponsors for the past 13 years. And I think he's ready to hang up that mantle and maybe try something else, so.
Maybe he'll write a book. More writing.
There you go.
All right. Apoya from Local Labs.
Yeah, that's just a standard.
In-person and remote learning updates.
Okay. So, we are still working through our general process as we move forward, and things have gone pretty well. We were able to navigate through the entire first semester with no unscheduled pauses. That's a big deal because a lot of schools did have to do that. Our plan works. It works well. Our students are here every day. They are learning. One of the things we are starting to really discuss now in transition team is how to remediate some of the students who are struggling in this environment because there are more students who struggle in this environment than in previous environment. When we had them here seven days, five days a week for seven periods, we always had a good thumb on them and were able to kind of keep on top of them as well. Because we have both remote students and in-person students, it's not as easy. So, we're beginning to look at some things, and we'll talk about right after this. And there's a reason why 6-4, 6-5, and 6-6 kind of all rolled together because you're going to hear bits and pieces of them as I move forward into this conversation. One of the things we are going to talk about here in a minute is what our plan is for some remedial summer courses, okay? So, we currently have been talking with the math and English department specifically, but the transition team as a whole as well, on how we need to move forward, what we think we may need to do next year to help remediate students who might be following the tide, how to get students caught up that aren't as far along as they normally would be. And so, those are the plans now. So, it's in that process where we've talked about it, the transition. We're moving into department chairs so they can talk with their different departments and then bring back some concepts. And it'll just be a couple of iterations of that, and we should have a good remediation plan in place soon for all of you to see. We have a lot of ideas out there. I don't want to throw anything out in public meetings because at this point, they're ideas, and something I say might be used against me. So, instead of that, I will just keep you in suspense until we have a chance to really talk through what we think will work best for our school and our students. Having said that, we are very pleased with what we're doing. You know, as we looked at our numbers at the end of the semester, we feel like, as far as the way that students responded to this whole situation where they have this dual environment, when they're in person, remember, they're here for three hours, but then they have two more hours for each period, 30 minutes for each period that they are working, of work in a remote set at home. So, basically, they're getting five hours of instruction a day. You know, and obviously, you can't have teachers here for 10 hours, but that's the way we were able to do it. We made a hybrid schedule. That hybrid schedule is doing exactly what it should do. As we contact trace, and you know, we're a big enough school. We're going to have positive cases. We're going to have kids that show up COVID-positive at school. We aren't seeing large numbers of close-contact quarantines coming from, as a matter of fact, on most normal days, today being an example. I had two come across my plate. Both of them had zero quarantines from school. Because we were able to maintain distance, we were able to maintain mask-wearing and hygiene practices, and as a result, that isn't impacting other students, which is one of the big fears as you move forward in this environment. If we were to have 25 kids in each classroom or more, one student could take out 20 to 30 kids as close contacts and knock them out of their education, in-person education, for 10 days. And that was the goal, to minimize that type of disruption to the education. It hasn't worked, okay? And very proud of what's happened. Every Thursday, we secure our numbers for the week. We go through, confirm them, and then on Friday, we send out to parents a report based on Thursday evening's information. And we do it that route because we want to make sure that there's some perforating involved and some other things. It gives us a little time to make sure that we're getting other information to parents at the same time. But it's also a constant snapshot that they can see from that one day per week. We're going to continue that practice for the foreseeable future. If you look at those, and you know, you get those in your Friday updates, midweek updates, I guess I should call them. We send those out to you. You can see there's some graphics involved so that people can see where we're at and what is happening. Now, along with this, we're starting to see some changes in the mitigations. As you may be aware, Region Two, which is our region, has moved from Tier Three mitigations to Tier One mitigations. That's good. That means we're stepping closer to that Phase Four. Phase Four being where we were back in September and early October. And the closer we get to that, the more we start to see things open up. So, one of the things that's coming out from IHSA right now is the possibility for some of our winter sports to start playing soon. We started seeing some of our first practices tonight in the gyms because it opened up very quickly. We honestly knew Phase Two was coming because that had been telegraphed pretty well from the state, and we knew that the governor was going to move us into Phase Two on Friday night. What we didn't see coming was the fact that then on Saturday, he dropped us even further into Phase One and opened up the possibility for some greater practices to occur. So, just so you know, that's how quickly some of this is starting to happen now. So, remember, early on in all of this, I said things are very fluid and they're happening very fast. Well, the pace is picking up again. The good news is it's going the other way right now. Hopefully, everybody maintains what they've been doing as the vaccine has rolled out and we're able to maintain our posture and continue to move in the right direction. The other thing I'll throw out is the 1Bs. And I don't know if you paid attention to the different classifications of people who get vaccinated. The 1As were the first group, medical workers, people who've had serious comorbidities. We are 1Bs, so educators fall into that area. So, I'm starting to send information to our teaching staff about how they could sign up to get vaccinated. Our hope is that over the next couple of months, we can get our entire staff vaccinated. Well, those who choose to be vaccinated. Not everybody will. But for those who choose to get vaccinated, they have the opportunity to do so. And I think that'll help also as we move forward and look at how we're doing things. So, hold on to your hats. I think we're just starting on the other end of this. Last year at this time, we were rolling into a very tight position, which was Last year at this time, we were rolling into, uh, a very tight position, which was tough and new for all of us. Now, hopefully this year, we're going back the other way. So, that's our, all right, so summer remediation, oh wait, does anybody have any questions about any of, I just threw a lot out there quickly, so.
So, you're working to bring us back a proposal of the remote learning and the remediation program?
Yes, yeah, but it's more general. The first thing that I'll tell you about is what we want to do this summer. That one's pretty specific, so I can talk directly to it. Um, but what I'm talking about is some of what we're doing right now, but some of what we're going to need to do next year as the year progresses. Because even though it only took a short amount of time to get where we are, it's like anything else, if you've ever, uh, seen a car accident, a very short amount of time, a lot of damage can occur, so it takes a little bit longer to repair things. I'm not saying that this was a car accident, all right, but that's, that's kind of where we're at. We need, we need a little bit of time to work through some of what's happened. Because if a student, if a student is struggling in, say, the remote environment and they've struggled for an entire semester and it lurs into two semesters, it's going to take at least a year to compensate for that maybe too. So, we're looking at kind of a long range. Short range, we're talking about some things we could do to stop the bleeding and then this summer, what we want to do is, traditionally, our summer school programs have been tuitioned. So, if somebody was gonna come in, they were gonna pay tuition to take, say, OTT or remedial English. This year, we're, we're gonna recommend that for remedial courses, that that not occur. We, we need to be able to open that up enough and get to some students who might really struggle paying for their class so that they can get in and get some credit recovery this summer. We also are probably gonna have to open up some transportation, which we haven't done in the past. So, we'll probably have set up some bus routes to make sure that we can pick kids up and get them here so that they can get, or, uh, work on some of the skills they lost over the course of the year. So, as far as summer school planning goes, what you're gonna hear from us is, we want to open up a couple extra sections of remedial English and math and I believe a remedial OTT might also be, that's not speech.
Speech?
Speech, yeah. Remedial speech will also be necessary. And so, with that being the case, then we'll also be able to transport kids.
And, and just to be clear, like we talked about, in transition, it'll also, it, it's likely that some of this will be absorbed by the district rather than putting it on the students. Normally, summer school is, is, uh, on the students, but since this is a remediation thing, we might pick up some of that now.
Well, summer school's always been a break-even scenario for us, we've been able to do it that way. It won't be this year. We are gonna have to spend a little more just to take care of some of these students.
So, I have a couple of questions about summer school. So, will, have all the summer school programs be free charge or just remediation?
Nope, just remediation.
And will the bus be for other kids as we're running the route anyway, or that's to be decided?
We can talk about that, we haven't made that decision yet. Right now, we're, we're focusing on remediation. I mean, if we're running the buses, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. Um, and then the other thing is, what about seniors? It, it would it be possible for some of those seniors to have some remediation and still graduate?
They wouldn't necessarily qualify to graduate in spring, but they might be able to qualify to graduate in summer, kind of like any other person.
So, we do that sometimes?
We already do that.
Definitely.
That's a practice, if they, they want to, you know, they're maybe a half credit shy, then they'll take a summer school course and then they graduate in July. They just unfortunately don't graduate today and can't do the ceremonies in May.
But they can still then in the fall and autumn and so.
Kind of like you'd see in the university.
Anybody else have questions?
All right, brings us to staffing update. I have a quick slideshow on that one. Um, it starts from the original, the first one we put together back in 2018. If you didn't live out, okay. Uh, back in 2018, we talked about a three-year staffing, all right, and if you've logged in under your name, you ought to be able to pull it up, so I'll walk you through those slides real quick. Um, we decided in 2018, as we were seeing growing enrollments, that we knew we were gonna need a number of new positions. So, we looked at new positions, we needed a special ed teacher, social studies, part-time RTI, part-time DU, and then we needed to do some replacement hiring in science, English, uh, Dina students who had moved on to, or moved back into the classroom and full-time RTI. So then in FY20, part of that plan was, we knew we were gonna need a Spanish science, Spanish teacher, science teacher counselor. We knew we need to replace two special education teachers, a family and consumer science teacher, and then FY21, we're gonna hire, uh, four FY21, an English teacher, a math teacher, and then replace an English and math teacher. Well, last year, we ended up changing that a little bit, we decided to hold off on hiring an English teacher so that we could determine whether or not we're going to functionally need one. And it, basically, we pushed that concept to this year. So, here we are in FY22. Um, our recommendations for this year is, are, that we are going to need an English teacher. Uh, right now, currently, our, most of our English department is on an overload and with the remediations that we're talking about, we're gonna need the extra staff to support, which, in a normal year, having that many English teachers on an overload's a bad thing. We still have a lump of students coming in. Remember, we started the year fourteen thirty-four, we are expecting to see closer to fifteen hundred over the next couple of years. So, we're gonna need that, that position anyway. We do need to replace a welding and auto teacher, we need to replace a PE teacher, and we are looking to see if we can hire a part-time business teacher to replace, uh, Mr. Eizer, who's moving into a different position. Um, I will say, one of the things that I think you need to be aware of is that the welding and auto, because of COVID and some things we're throwing off, our original plan was to bring a former student in that we knew was going into this area. I don't know if that's going to be possible because I think his student teachings get, ended up getting pushback and like that. With that being the case, I'm not sure what we're gonna do right now. We have to look at, we may have to open more positions, as I said, I don't know. Uh, there are a couple of things I need to look for, but I want you to be aware of that. Um, then for, just to stay with my tradition, we're trying to look three years out, uh, new positions in '23 and '24, we don't have anything down yet. We're not looking at hiring anything new. Based on our numbers and where we're at, we think we're going to be just one. And replacement hiring, we are not aware of any retirements coming up in FY23, '24.
Um, my concern is with the teacher shortage, when would you post those open for those positions?
Um, we'll post them pretty much.
Okay, very good.
You know, with the, with the one exception, I do need to do some baby one, one other potential for.
Very good, that's why I made it to that.
Yep, we'll, we'll move on a pretty quickly, as a matter of fact, we've already received interest in a PE position and we, we posted that, yeah, so, we're, they're, they're coming out right now, so I think we'll be.
So, we're talking about an English and a PE and part-time business?
Business.
And is that easy to find part-time? I mean, do we have very many part-time workers?
I haven't.
Okay. So, we bring somebody back for that?
Yeah, normally you're not gonna see me put part-time in there, I just had something in mind, so.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, all right. Anybody else have anything? So, the teachers will, um, eventually then maybe not have as much overload?
That would be the plan, we should, we should be able with, uh, with an English teacher, we ought to be able to at least relieve five of the loads.
Okay. Anything else on that? If not, the goal planning session discussion, I guess we just need to.
Yeah, we need to kind of.
Start the time pretty soon.
Well, we need to think about how we want to do that and there are a number of thoughts here, so this is really kind of a board discussion on this. And I know in the past, we've talked about wanting to put goals together fairly early. However, we are in the eve of an election, um, we do have four positions open and seven people running. Um, there's, and there are two theories of, there are two theories of how to do this. Do you try to go ahead and do a goal planning session and then leave that for the next board to follow through, or do you wait till the new board's seated to actually have your goal planning section and include them in the conversation? And so, that's the question that I need to ask of all of you, what your preference is. Now, you can ask me what I think, but I'll start there in case anybody has some very big thoughts about that.
When we came in four years ago in the regalia, we said for four positions, the goals had already been set. And I found it was quite easy really to, to go on and understand what you could do and so I think it was a good groundwork for us.
Yeah, I, I'm a fan of setting the goals before the new board comes on. In part because if there were a large turnover, um, there's a lot to learn, I have to say, right? There's a huge learning curve for new board members to learn and, uh, about being a board member, but also about the district, and we're in this really unusual COVID time. And, um, and I have a feeling that the goals are gonna be pretty much kind of just try to catch up and, you know, it, it's gonna be a tricky set of goals, right? And so, I think it would be good for the existing board to work with, for the administration to set those goals.
I would echo that. And one of the board goals I see, because we're, we always look at the ones, we have standard goals that will always be here, we identify those, you know, we'll always be watching the budget and looking at the curriculum and so forth. Um, and we need to look at which board goals have been completed on forming new board goals. The big board goal I see as an educator is, um, the catch-up. Just what you were talking about earlier, that I plugged into this at home quite a while ago. Um, where are we by the end of this year, looking back two years with a normal school year and then last year losing, uh, a large, our portion of the second semester with a switch and not, and all of a sudden, looking at something we've never looked at before. And those things, although we are acclimated now, um, it isn't the same as two years ago. And I'm very interested to both look at the formal and, uh, standard evaluations of our students academically at the end of this year, when we have a year and almost a half of its new life where all we leave. And I think that's gonna be a big portion of how do we get these kids back on track with things maybe easing back into a more normal life pattern? And, uh, how much is lost? How can we get them there as quickly as possible and as, as successfully as possible? And I think with our, our background of at least two years on this board and going forward, I think that's, that's good background. It doesn't say anything negative at all about the candidates and who might be coming onto the board, not at all. But, as you say, uh, even coming onto this board from a grade school board, that first year for me, it was a big learning curve. They're not the same at all. And that was ten years on that board. And, uh, so I, I fully agree that I think this board has background that I can't imagine someone who hasn't gone through this for almost two years. Uh, it would be asking a lot of them to, for that input when they're learning just the normal things we had to learn before COVID ever struck. So, I, I would very much like to go out in that manner and get an earlier start in spring.
Well, that's kind of where I was at, to be honest.
So, we need to get moving on this because like, it's a couple of months. So, do you think we ought to set then, um, we have four, have just a goal planning meeting to kind of review what we've done and?
We will need to, there are a couple of goals that, um, are pretty traditional for committee. If we're looking at facilities and finance, I think that's easy enough for us, facilities and finance together. And, and talk through those, have those at least laid out so that when we come into the goals planning, we, we're not spinning our wheels on something that could have been handled in a committee. We can kind of refresh on what the recommendation is out of the committee and then go straight to, um, the other two goals, which I think, as everybody's mentioned, that's where the real, real work is gonna be this year, so.
So, I guess we're looking, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, were you gonna suggest the day? I mean, I, I think it's probably something we have to look at in the next, maybe even before the next school week, you, if, um, I think we get in there?
Um, I, I don't, the reason I don't know that that will be real functional, some of what you're gonna do is what the remediation plan is.
Okay, okay. And we only have three weeks, right?
Yes, it's a short.
So, maybe right after.
So, I'm thinking early, thinking mid-February.
Okay. Yeah, I forgot too, like I said, this is a later meeting, so, next meeting, will you be able to bring your calendars and we'll see what we can.
Well, I, how about this, I'll shoot out some dates, uh, so that everybody can kind of see the calendars, so that we can have it set and we'll just have a hand to it, but this is when we're gonna do it.
Right, did you have thoughts on that?
No, I was just gonna kind of walk through the timeline, same thing, like you're gonna run it through committees, so that's, you know, so by early February, you probably would have run the committees so that we probably do something in February, maybe late February.
Yeah, um, yeah, because that'll give me, I mean, even if we try to get, if we try to get, uh, facilities and finance in the next couple of weeks. And hopefully get some feedback on where we're comfortable with our groups and by the time we hit, and it could even be the week after the next board meeting, you know, by the time we hit that timeframe, then we're in a place to be able to start talking through, because really honestly, as we've said, a lot of this is gonna go back to remediation and what the new board is. Because there are things that we've talked about within the staff that we think may end up becoming more of a permanent structure. I, I'll be honest with you, based on what we've seen over the past year and a half, I don't know how we get away from a, offering some version of a remote program.
Which we kind of talked about anyway, so let's just sort of, push this right up.
So, so, those are the types of things that I think we need to kind of solidify and have a plan for. And I do appreciate getting that done earlier rather than later, because then I have a little bit of a head start going into summer. Those summer months, especially this year, are gonna be crazy. Um, I don't know that we'll get back to a seven-period day by the end of the year, it's possible, but I don't know that it will happen. With that being the case, that means that next year, we have to completely retool and structure back to the way, kind of to the way we were with a full day that starts at seven hours a day, so.
You know, and, and to that end, when, because the first step is for the administration to kind of flesh out and bring some proposals to the committees, right? So, I would encourage you guys to think about, um, I think you're gonna have to sideline a lot of our goals, right, that we had. I mean, there, you can only have so many goals and, and some of the goals are gonna have to be moved aside so that you can do the remediation and so on, right? But if you can write the goals in such a way that you remember the goals that we had to sideline, you know what I mean? I don't want them to drop off, maybe, you know, somehow, it's like.
The good news is.
Goal in weight or something, I don't know.
The good news is with those goals, we still have them.
Right, right.
So, I think the important thing is for everybody who remains on the board and for us to remember, when we get to next year's goal planning session, instead of just bringing the previous year's goals, we need the previous two years.
Yeah.
Which, very possible, they're all written out, so that's not a difficult.
Yeah, you can just almost make them an appendix, actually.
You could put them in tiers.
Uh-huh.
I think that would, I think so.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
All right. Uh, the next is the phase one of the HBAC project, which Bonnie touched on a little bit, um, we're gonna vote on later. Expand on that or?
Yeah, uh, so.
Expert in the room?
Yeah, this all ties back to the ten-year health life safety survey and, um, it also folds in well with our long-term strategic plan that we're still putting together, uh, it's kind of ten-year capital plan. And so, um, we tasked MEP Ryan Holmes, who's the functional expert, uh, he's done a lot of work with, um, local school districts, doing the same thing. He's done a lot of work with local school districts doing the same thing. And so he was tasked with putting together a multi-phase plan. One option, you know, if money was no, you know, object, you know, we could try to, you know, embark and do all of this in a short period of time. Probably wouldn't be able to get it done in the summer. And so he really put together a very, very quality plan that spreads it out over four different phases. The best thing that I like from the financial standpoint, Phase One, Phase Two, and what the board is going to consider tonight is just Phase One. It's to break kind of the static friction, hit some of our standalone areas. The Ashbrook building was built in the mid-1970s. 1975, I think, is when that opened up. And so we've got, you know, unit vents that are in there that are original to the structure. Anytime that you get that long of a life out of them, it's great. It's really, it's a tribute to our maintenance program, but they need to be replaced. And so that's the designated area in Phase One. Getting back to the financial side of the house, we should be able to cover the costs in all of these phases. Most definitely Phase One with two fund sources. One, just what we normally budget every year for building and maintenance. And then a good portion of that will be covered. The cost would be covered with our designated funds project. So the board has set aside all of this money for these years. And we're going to continue to set aside these funds in future budgets. And that's proof that this works. You know, we'll be able to take on $700,000 or so of this project to get Phase One off and rolling. I do want to say, last thing is, in his estimate, Ryan does a very good job giving the board an estimate. There shouldn't be much deviation from that. Now, he did say the disclaimer, once you open up stuff that was, you know, installed 45 years ago, you may run into some unforeseen. Okay, that exists, but it's pretty simple. It's going to keep our administrative costs down. Ryan Marady, the changes that the district has moved forward with, he'll be able to oversee that operation. And then you've got MEP that will design it. And so the action item that we're going to ask is that you authorize the superintendent to get MEP engaged in developing kind of the plan and kick that project off. But it'll bring everything underneath one controls, set of controls which will increase our energy efficiency, which we've got good plan already in place. And so it's just really going to fold into that. So. It's probably a little more detailed, but it's a lot less than what Ryan described to the facilities committee the other day.
And if we do this in the start of the summer?
That's correct.
Part of the urgency, I think, to get going on them.
Cost for that, sorry, I was typing it up.
It's about, it's in the 700s. Phase One. 785. You hit the right numbers.
All right.
785. Now, that's just an estimated cost. But the other thing that Ryan did say is that the market is right. One of the projects they had that he was working, I think he said he had nine bidders. And there's a lot, there's companies out there looking for, you know, the work. And so if we can get a good start on that, then we could be bringing, you know, let bids and march and then bring bids back to the board in April, which is enough lead time to start getting, you know, things ordered. It'll be good. It'll be good to start tackling that. And like I said, everything is incremental. So to give you an example of other phases, we have a 100-ton chiller on the roof, and that provides air conditioning to a whole bunch of different areas. The plan is very incremental. We'll start taking the load off the 100-ton chiller, which, you know, that piece of equipment is getting to its end of life. But this plan takes into effect that if we reduce the load, then we can extend the life of that while we're doing this. And so it's very low risk, what they put together. I think it's high reward, and I think it's very cost efficient. You hate to bring groups in here four different times, but, you know, as we take action on these bonds, you know, as we keep moving things three, four years down the road, that gives the board more flexibility with funding options. And if you keep in mind, if we go three more years and we designate $377,000 each year, at the end of those three years, we've got over $1 million towards designated funds for projects such as this. So we hope to keep the costs within our own organization. Definitely not taking it back out to the taxpayers.
And the other nice thing is that it's going to be done in the summer, so it's real minimal disruption to the.
That's correct.
Looked like, I thought this was a good plan.
We'll add on to that the fact that we put the new music building up without a referendum too.
Right, right.
So I think these are commendable.
Lastly, Kyle and I are just getting bored now. We had projects for so long, and we've had one year without a project, so now let's get it going. I'm just kidding.
Building wise, okay. I could say a lot of things about this year. Waring is not one of them.
That's the headline for the Journal Star tomorrow. Waring is not one of them.
Tweet it out right now.
All right, you have any other discussion or information?
Six point nine.
Oh, yes, SRO contract.
Okay, so we put an information item in last month to approve the SRO contract. There are a lot of weird things going on with legislation right now. I think it's in our best interest to push it a month to see if anything settles out from this. Yeah, I think I'll leave it at that. We do, we want to continue the program as long as we are allowed to do so.
When's that contradictory?
It's not, it's not until this time, so yeah, we do have a little bit of time. I think from the city's end, we don't want to drag it out too far because they have to make decisions based about the police force and based on what we do. But I told them, I think we could, we could probably come to a conclusion in February. Just give us a couple more weeks to see what else happens to fall out of this legislative session, which honestly has been intriguing. So.
Do we have any other items? All right, now we go on to the consent agenda. 1.1, approved regular board meeting minutes, December 14th, 2020. 1.2, approved executive session meeting minutes, December 14th, 2020. 1.3, approved facility meeting minutes, January 14th, 2020. And two are built. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And resolution, oh, we did. As presented.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments on that? All right, if not, we have roll call.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, eight is the action items. The first action item is to approve the District 51's request to withdraw membership from the WT SEC.
So you have an official copy of the request? We've seen this heavily. We've been talking about it for a couple of months. So this is now the official approval of the request.
Do we have a motion to approve District 51's request to withdraw membership from the WT SEC?
So move.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. 8.2, same thing. Approved District 52's request to withdraw membership from the WT SEC. Do we have a motion to approve that request?
Yep, I move, but I would just like to, as part of that note, as Mandy noted, the date is incorrect in it. It says effective June 30th, 2020, and that's.
Twenty one.
It should be 20, it should be 21.
That's not very.
And that's not our error. That's in the 52 letter, but just officially.
I think just your motion to just approve as, technically, I think it should be June 30th, 2021. I was going to say July 1st, but we'll go June 30th.
I will second.
All right, so motion second. Any other comments? Roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Action item number three, approved to engage Midwest engineering professionals to design Phase One of the HBAC project. Do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion second. Did we pretty much discuss that earlier? All right, roll call please.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
I think we have a motion. You don't have to sign it to be, no.
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So number four, to approve a resolution providing for the issue of taxable general obligation limited refunding school board series 2021 of the district for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the district providing for the levy of the district's direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest of said bond and authorize the sale of said bond to the purchasers thereof. Do we have a motion to approve that as presented?
That stays the button.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments? All right, roll call please.
Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Okay, come in. Our motion passes. So five. Approved resolution authorizing and directing the execution of one or more escrow agreements in connection with the issue of taxable general obligation limited refunding school bond series 2021 from the district. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Motion second. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, if not, roll call please.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Essing? Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Oh, I have to interrupt you just for clarification from a something. I missed it. When we did the consent agenda, did you put in the 7.2 for the bill?
Yes, you did.
I didn't have a heart, so probably.
Okay, so now I need a motion to go into executive session for purposes of collective negotiation, discussion of minutes, and employee evaluations.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
There is an action item to do afterwards, but.
But the time to, which one to schedule, that's all.
Nothing in question.